Stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get underway, there's a few housekeeping matters I'd like to take care of. First, directing your attention to your left, you'll see the fire exit. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevators. Use either the front or the back stairs to leave the building. Our meetings are recorded by our secretary, Michelle, who's making a record. It's not a verbatim transcript, but she does need to keep track of who is speaking for the minutes. So when you come to the podium, if you would speak into the microphone and give us your name and address each time that you come to the podium, that will help her with the minutes. We will follow the items as they appear on our agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are available on the table just inside the door to the room. When the case is called, the applicant and/or their representatives will come to the podium, identify themselves by providing their names and their addresses, and then we will place them under oath, and then they will have the opportunity to present their case to the board. During their presentation, members of the board may ask questions or make comments to try and clarify aspects of the presentation. Once the board has, the applicants completed the presentation and the questions of the board have been answered, then we will open the meeting for public input. The first portion of public input will be those wishing to speak in favor of the application, and then we will call those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. After we've heard any and all public input, we will then allow the applicant an opportunity, should they wish, to readdress the board, to answer any questions or address any issues that came up during the public input portion of the meeting. At that point, we will then close the hearing and continue on to the next case on the agenda. After we've heard all the cases that are on the agenda, we will then take a short recess, and when we return, we will deliberate and make decisions with respect to each of the cases in the order in which the applicants continue to be present. We will consider all the cases first of those that are still present in the order that they appear on the agenda, and then we will take up those cases where the applicants have left. No further input is allowed at that point, but you're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations if you would like, or you can watch them on television. And if you want to know what the outcome of a case is, you can call into the zoning and planning department tomorrow morning, and they'll be glad to let you know what our decision was. Before we get underway, there's two things I'd like to say. Number one, I'd like to say that I'm delighted that the town board is very appreciative of their confidence in appointing me to serve a second seven-year term in this position. I love this board. It's a wonderful group of people to work with, and I really like the work that we do on behalf of the town. And then I'd also like to congratulate our member, Mr. Paulino, who later this month will be receiving the Outstanding Young Lawyer Award from the New York State Bar Association at their annual meeting in New York City. And that is quite an accomplishment, and from everything that I've read and learned, it's very well deserved, and I'd like to take a minute to congratulate you. So thank you. Now we're ready to get underway.
Thank you, Mr. Cherick. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1301-1. Upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering, PC, acting as agent for LB 1999-C1 Depot Plaza LLC, C/ O, for area variances to install two freestanding signs totaling 202 square feet, 25-feet-tall incidental sign, enter and exit with a commercial message on the signs exceeding maximum allowable square footage and height on premises 999 East Ridge Road in an manufacturing district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Mark Costage with offices at 217 Lake Avenue, Rochester. Also with me tonight is Paul Becker from Tops Food Markets and Frank Imbergia, who's the project developer. As advertised, we-
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. As advertised, we are seeking relief on our sign package for three different area variances. That would be the overall size of the sign. We are requesting it to be 202 square feet total signage for the pylon signs. That would be two signs. We are proposing one sign to be at the center, signalized entrance, and we are proposing a second sign, a smaller sign, be at the Carter Street entrance. Those signs are about 600 feet apart, so we feel it's critical for our project to be properly identified for the traveling public. We feel that the sign on Carter Street especially is important because it will keep traffic off Ridge Road and actually results in an easier way to enter the site. We are also looking for a height, allowing us to be 25 feet of height on the main entrance sign, verse 20. Again, I think that has to do with the number of signs that we are going to need. We're proposing to have probably over a dozen tenants and without a size, a sign big enough to list all those tenants, and I think we're going to have a hard time with our tenants being represented properly. It's rather a large shopping center, and it's critical, you know, if people aren't given the greatest exposure in the center, that their sign be out there. Finally, we are asking for a relief to allow for a wayfinding sign. Our main tenant is Tops. They're proposing a wayfinding sign, which would be an arrow, and it shows the Tops logo. So if the logo wasn't on there, it really wouldn't make much sense to try and get you to Tops, so that's why we're doing that. I did go through all these standards in the letter. I'd be happy to go through those in their letter of intent, or if you prefer not, then it's up to you.
I just had one question, and it may have been in here, and I may have overlooked it, but in relation to the signs that we approved not long ago at the current Tops location, how do these signs compare in terms of square footage?
I'm going to turn that over to Paul Becker.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Paul Becker with Tops Markets, 6363 Main Street. Was that in relation to a bank, or?
No, that was in relation to the current Tops location. We had a variance application not too long ago for a new sign there, two signs, one on Goodman and one on Ridge, and it had the Tops and some of the other tenants that were in it, Marshalls and things like that.
You're catching me a little off guard, unless there was the landlord that did something with the rest of the plaza?
Yeah, do you-
I think it was the landlord.
It was the landlord, okay.
Right.
Do we know, I mean, it looks to me like this is probably a sign that's fairly comparable to what we'd approved there.
Yes, and, I mean, they're allowed two signs because of their frontage, just the length of their frontage. Each sign is 75 square feet, so they're allowed 150. They're asking for 52 square feet more in total, and only the Ridge Road sign is the one where they're asking for the extra five feet of height because of all the tenants that are going to be in this 150,000 square feet of entire space.
And put the sign that says gas is $299.9 a gallon.
That sign, yes, is shown to be 25 feet to the peak, and subtracting the 52, it's probably fairly close to 20 before you put the little peak in there.
Uh huh. I doubt that's what the sign will say when you install it, though.
Subject of change. You're right.
Yeah, it won't be $299, right?
Yeah. I think we could approve that.
Other than the bank and the food market that's going up, and I think there's one more out parcel that might be going up, how many other tenants is there?
All the tenants that are currently in the plaza are going to remain, so I think there will be over a dozen.
Okay, so the side section, that's not coming down?
It is coming down. The staging of the projects will be, we're going to improve the Kmart space, then move the current tenants into that space along with building the Tops, and then we'll take down the rest of it, so that we don't lose any tenants.
And the repair building that's currently by Carter Street, is that part of this?
Unfortunately, it's not.
On the height of the sign, the Georgetown Plaza sign that's directly across the street from that, if we give you the variance to allow 25 feet, will your sign be higher in terms of, I think, altitude, or at the same level as the Georgetown sign across the street?
Now you've caught me off guard. I don't know the height of that sign.
Because, I mean, you can understand, if we let your sign go up an extra foot above theirs, then when they do theirs, they might want to go up another foot, and another foot, and another foot.
I guess the argument against that would be that ours, I think our shopping center is larger and does have more tenants. I may not be correct there, but-
But you don't know if it's the same height?
I do not.
Would there be any way for you to find that out?
I could absolutely, we have surveying rods that I could just put up against the sign, and it's a 25-foot-high rod, so I could easily do that, yes.
I was formerly a tenant in the sunken section off East Ridge. Is that going to be leveled for the gas entrance if it goes down?
We're actually going to raise the grade there about four or five feet, so we're going to be taking out the retaining wall and improving it dramatically.
Eliminating all that snow travel.
Yeah. I just want to point out to the board that the location of this sign to the right or to east of the main entrance is at the fourth parking bay, and I just opened up the full set of plans to show that the contour elevation, the grade elevation at that point, is 432.5, and the grade elevation of Ridge Road is about 436. So the sign is already three and a half feet down below the pavement level of Ridge Road before you even start with the height.
And then, from an earlier sign application that we had, we learned that the sign has to be a certain size and at a certain height in order to catch the attention of motorists as they're passing by at or near the speed limit that's allowed on the road. So in reading your application, it seemed to me like that was one of the things that went into this.
Absolutely. I mean, if a sign is too small, it's ineffective. It's almost more of a hazard, because people are, you know, obviously concentrating on trying to read too small of a sign and not paying attention to the road. And I think that the logo helps with that, too. I mean, if you're looking for Starbucks, you see that symbol, Starbucks. You know to, you know, you don't have to read the words.
Right.
Okay, so, right here, this, the sign is the main sign up on Ridge. It'll be, and that's the main entrance, right in the center.
All right, it's going to be east of the main entrance.
East of the main entrance, okay. And perpend, it's not facing the street, it's facing east and west.
The faces would be east and west, correct?
Yeah, illuminated, obviously.
Internally illuminated.
Okay. This is a point of information. I know it doesn't have anything to do with the variance, but are these indications all suggested improvements to the parking lot?
We're doing dramatic improvements to the parking lot. It's right now completely uncontrolled. It's in terrible shape. There's no landscape. We're going to put in islands at the end of each parking bay. It'll be landscaped, concrete raised. It's going to look like a new shopping center, what it's done.
That's great.
And I trust you'll have a much more sensible line of lanes than what they've got at the Walmart?
Yes, we're actually installing a central, this is also going to be curved, down the center of the island, so as you come in, you will enter down in, and then you can go east or west about halfway through the shopping center, just beyond the bank, which is a real nice way to feed cars into different locations in the center. Or if somebody wanted to drop someone off, they could continue right down and go right to the front of the stores. It's going to be completely redone.
The small utility building on the front will be coming down. There's a little, small shed type-
Yes.
I don't even know what purpose that served.
I think there's utilities in there or something. We've got to redo all the utilities.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the, well, that was the only case that was on our agenda.
We're taking a break early?
No. My, I gather since we received a letter, a copy of a letter, did we have, is there anyone here from 4903 Culver Road? Okay. So the first thing we would need, that is one of our, that's our first tabled case, so does someone wish to make a motion, well, I'll move, to take case number ZB 1212-4 off the table and open that up for consideration? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six votes in favor. One member is absent, and there's no abstentions. So now, if you would call that case.
Case number ZB 1212-4, request by O'Donnell &amp; Associates Incorporated, acting as agent for Lou Tommasetti, for area variances to construct a southern-covered porch and a northern deck with less than required side setbacks on premises 4903 Culver Road in an R1 residential district.
Your name and address, sir?
Oh, my name is Joe O'Donnell. I'm the architect of record. Address 150 Versailles Road, Rochester, New York.
If you'd raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, board. I'm here tonight to represent the owner of 4903 Culver Road in the matter of seeking relief to the setback requirements for the eastern side of the property and the western side of the property with the proposed expansion of an existing deck. I'll take each of the items separately and kind of walk you through them. If you're familiar with the property, if you've seen the photographs, the existing house was in disrepair. Mr. Tommasetti purchased the property about a year ago with various ideas of whether to expand it, just renovate it as it is, et cetera, et cetera. He resides in Pompano Beach, Florida, and has now decided to renovate this house in order to live here in the summer times when he comes back. Sometime in October, he, not being familiar with the rules and regulations, began to upgrade the house as it exists today, where they were just going to replace the windows, do the siding, repair the roof, et cetera, et cetera. Upon the demolition of the existing, there was an existing breezeway that had been enclosed at one point in the past. When the contractor got into that, the entire foundation was completely in disrepair and failing. There was actually signs of runoff going down through the mortar joints, which had been most likely inaccurately installed. So he, they decided to start rebuilding the foundation. Well, a couple days later, the town building inspector came down and shut the job down because he didn't have a permit. That's when I got the phone call to get involved, get some drawings done, file the Article 34 permit with the DEC, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So now that Mr. Tommasetti was subjected to the proper procedures for obtaining the building permit, he decided to then ask for the proposed expansion of the deck on the lakeside. And essentially, all that is, is extending the west property line where we are seeking the variance relief, just connects the existing deck to the proposed deck in the same line. The setback on the east side is five foot, which is required by state building code, as you can see from the site plans that I submitted in your package. In addition to the other variance that we're seeking, which is on that southeast corner of the house, what they decided to do was to keep the building footprint exactly as it was before they tore down that existing porch. But Mr. Tommasetti wanted to extend the existing roof line over that and create a covered area, which is open on two sides. And in order to do that structurally, a column would be required, and also, I think the column then finishes off that corner of the house architecturally as well. So he doesn't really change the roof line as far as height, he just is proposing to extend it out a little bit towards Culver Road. I believe there was a letter of opposition issued by the neighbor. Mr. Tommasetti has had conversations with them. It was a matter of them not understanding how the print was being read. They admitted they didn't know how to read blueprints. In fact, one of the comments was, they thought that the deck was five inches from their property line along the east side. And the other misunderstanding was that the dotted line on my site plan, they thought that that was a solid wall, but it's not. Because right now, the existing house, as you can see from my A-0 drawing, had a vinyl shed sitting in that notched-out front corner. And Mr. Tommasetti said, you know, it'd be nicer if I just cleaned that up, made it an open little area where I could store my grill and put a concrete slab there and get rid of the ugly vinyl shed. So that's what his intent was, and that's what the, our case is here tonight for those variances.
I think you're referring to the letter that we had in our December packet that was dated, of course, now I can't find it.
Yeah, it was an email, I think.
November 29th from Mr. and Mrs. Soslinski?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And, so essentially, he's looking to rebuild on the same footprint that was there before?
Exactly. The only difference is that the front of the house, if you look at drawing A1, where it shows the bedroom, where it's in the front, they wanted to cantilever that out over the existing foundation a couple feet, but the foundation is exactly the same footprint that was there. They just cantilevered that front area out a little bit. If you look at, and I, just for the rest of the boards, if you look at the back of the site plans, you see it says 8.4 feet where that sticks out. It's now 10-foot, 10-foot-six. But the foundation underneath it is still at the 8.4.
Said on drawing A1.
Yeah, if you look at drawing A1, and you look over in the lower-left corner, the proposed floor plan?
Yeah.
You see that there's a bedroom.
Yeah.
That area, it's drawn to scale at 8.4 feet, but I changed the note over on the left, the dimension to 10-point, or 10-foot-six, and then noted not to scale, just so that was a simple revision for the billing permit. But to answer your question, the footprint below it is still the exact same as the house.
Okay, so it's just going to stick out a little?
Yeah, and then that, that drawing also shows more clearly the proposed column in the corner, and that's, that's really the issue of the variance, is that post right there.
None of those particular buildings have, their foundations are really in bad shape. Are they going to build up on this?
Well, this one, this house at some point was raised, and the main house was all rebuilt. The foundation's beautiful. It's in great shape. It was this front little porch part, I don't know if you had the photographs of the old porch, I've got some colored photographs if anybody'd like them. When they, when they went to just start working on that to re-site it, all the walls were caved in, and the actual sand had been washed down into it. You know, one of the other things that we're working with the DEC now is to properly grade the front end of that property so that the drainage goes down around the house now.
When you're talking about the front porch, you're talking about this little area with the door.
Yes, exactly. Whoever built that didn't even use mortar in some of the joints of the foundation, so during a heavy rainstorm, it actually buckled right in under its, the hydrostatic pressure of the sand.
Might not even have had a permit.
I wouldn't be surprised. But you'll also see on drawing A1, the front elevation, and that's right in the middle of the drawing. You can just see where, it's like a little cantilevered portion of the roof and a column in the corner, so I think architecturally, it finishes it off, the house off, a little nicer, rather than just not having a column at all for the sake of, you know, no post there for the setback, but.
I'm still missing the column that you're referring to. I'm not sure which-
Do you mind if I approach?
Not at all. Probably just me not knowing where to look. Oh, that post?
Yeah.
Okay, which is this post?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Now, is that going to be visible from the road?
The port, or the post?
Yeah.
It's visible when you come up the steps to the berm, because the house itself isn't really visible from the road. It's, you know, because of that property there is all bermed up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to answer your question, no from the road, but yes, when you come up to the steps, you know, you'll notice that column right there. I mean, it's just a decorative, it's structural, but it's decorative.
Right, but it's a solid wall in between. There's not going to be a door or anything there.
No, 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 no. I, in the floor plan, if you look again to the lower left, I did show an optional door there. The owner's already said he doesn't want to put a door there, but it was just something in my design that I said, well, if you want it, have a door off of that front bedroom to that little covered porch, and maybe have coffee on it. He said, there's, what's the point of having coffee on that porch when you have the lake to the north? So he said, eliminate, we'll eliminate the door. So if that is a condition, that's fine.
Are you, are you going to be the builder, too?
No.
Or is it different?
I'm, yeah, I'm just the architect.
Okay, I mean, does the builder or these plans incorporate the siding on that particular building, I take it is coming off, and that siding is probably made out of asbestos?
Um, it is not right now, as far as I know. What, that's a good, I'm glad you brought that up, because, yeah, the house is going to be re-sided, but on the east side, at the suggestion of the building inspector, we're going to have to go with a non-combustible siding, which will either be the hardy plank or an aluminum siding. But if there is any environmental materials there that need to be removed, that will be done, obviously, for, we're not going to go over asbestos siding or, but I, I wouldn't know off the top of my head if it is.
Well, this particular material, I've-
It looks like it, yeah, it could be.
I mean, they could go over it, but it's a matter of how much disturbance they're going to do to it.
No, nothing. They could encapsulate it right if that, in fact, is allowed. I'll have to talk to John Nidde, if he'll allow-
Because they do have the bars right next door and our close-
Marges is three doors down?
Three doors down.
Yeah, three doors down.
But there is a lot of people around that area.
Yeah, uh huh. But we are required on the whole east side of this house now to make it one-hour rated construction, which imposes, you know, financial burden, but it has to be done by the state code now. Did I miss anything, Larry?
I mean, what you're saying is correct. I had a situation back about seven years ago out in Greece for a similar, where you had to build a firewall-
Yeah.
-with no windows because of the closeness of the two structures.
Yeah.
Basically, with this post, is, you have a basic box, and this post is a structural member, because you're carrying two-by-six ceiling joists, and then your rafters are two-by-eight rafters, and you've got a ridge beam that's a double one-and-a-half-by-nine-and-a-half micro-lam ridge beam.
Right.
So you really need this post, and it is, what I can say, in the footprint of the house.
Exactly.
It's basically a box.
Exactly.
And otherwise, you'd have to do some really elaborate cantilevering and stuff like that to, or- that to, or really...
Exactly. You'd have to put cantilever a micro-lam beam out there to carry that roof.
Right, or you'd really butcher up your roof line.
Exactly. And it just, structurally, it makes sense, and aesthetically, it makes sense, in my opinion, because it finishes off that corner. As you do notice, as Larry did bring up, there is absolutely no windows along that whole side of the house, because you just can't have them anymore.
I'd probably put a little octagonal window over the tub up high on that front, just to get some ventilation in the bathroom.
Okay, yep, we thought about that.
Or some small little window.
Okay, that would actually dress up that covered area, too.
Right, give it a little snap.
Certainly will be taken into consideration. Okay, any other questions?
Any other questions or comments?
Is this on a septic system or a source?
Source.
And you said that, I think I heard you say that there's something special that they're putting on to retard fire on the sides?
Yeah, you have to put on, you know, you can use, there's several different products. You know, you can use a dense glass, which is more of a commercial product, but has an hour rating, and then, of course, you have to rate your soffits, your fascias, and then up the roof line until you're five feet away from the property line. So it's a little bit of a tricky detail these days. It's, but it needs to be done, and I think, based on what happened on Christmas Eve, you understand the reason.
We all know why, how fires can spread from houses that are close together now.
The product that he mentioned, hardy board, is a trade name, but it's basically a concrete siding, and it looks a lot like a clapboard. So you'll see a lot of, and I'll call them high-end homes. In fact, I think the Pittsburgh Dairy was built with hardy board, so it looks like clapboard, it paints like clapboard, but it doesn't peel like cedar clapboard.
I believe the cams down here on Titus is hardy, too.
Okay.
Pretty sure.
All right. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this application.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Joe.
Have we had any communication this month from, in relation to 135 Point Pleasant Road?
No, sir.
None at all?
Mr. Chairman, about that piece of property, it's, there is a, I don't think it has any relationship to this, to zoning board, but I believe that we, the owner of that has been in touch with the Point Pleasant Firemen's Association, and they're trying to work out a mutual agreeable plan for that property, which does not involve developing it. So that may, I would not, from what I know of this, I probably would suggest that we not address that or take it off the table in any way, because there's something going on.
All right, my only concern is, I believe that in the, this originally was on our agenda in September. It was adjourned, it was tabled with the consent of the owner in September. The owner requested that it be deferred until November, and then requested that it be deferred to December, and then requested in December that it be deferred again. But now, if I understand correctly, we don't have a request from the owner to defer considerations. So I seem to recall, and I'll ask Mr. Orelli to address this, I seem to recall that there's something, if an application has been pending for a certain period of time and we don't act, that it then is deemed to be granted, I believe. Is that correct?
That's true, but I think what I would consider is that the application having been made in December, the clock isn't running from the original time of the application, but only from the most recent request to defer it over.
But am I correct that it's a 60-day timeframe?
Yes.
And because there's 31 days in January, if we went to, and there were 31 days in December, if we go into January, won't we, to February, won't we run into a problem with that?
It would be, it's, it would be more than 60 days.
Would it be advisable to take it off the table and then deny it without prejudice to resubmission?
Yeah, I think that would probably make sense.
And then he wouldn't have to pay a new fee, right? He could just resubmit it if he was so inclined?
And it wouldn't be inconsistent with the information we received from Mr. Thomas, either.
All right, then I would, I would make a motion that we take case number ZB1209-9 off the, off the table.
Second.
For consideration. All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries, six votes in favor, no abstentions, one member remains absent. Now I would make a motion that we deny without prejudice to resubmission at any point the application for the variance.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by a vote of six in favor, one absent, and no abstentions.
Mr. Orelli, we don't have to mention the type-two, that it's a type-two action pertaining to seeker?
No, that would be bad.
But it is. So we'll put that in the minutes ahead of that, that it's a type-two action for seeker And then I believe that takes care of all the cases that are on our docket for this evening, so we will be in recess until quarter to eight. Or so. The road is here, this is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request for the variance for the sign, with the following findings.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I forgot about this thing. For the following findings, Mr. Chairman, first of all, the sign does not represent any kind of a major change to the character of the neighborhood. There is not a reasonable alternative for this particular setup because of the structure or the setup of the, the commercial area between Ridge Road and, around Ridge Road and Carter Street. Although the size of the sign is, is going to be a little on the larger side than we're used to, nevertheless, I think the points made by the applicant regarding visibility of the sign and room for informing the public about what, who the tenants are, that are I'm trying to think of the word. It gives the, a good reading, reason for the size of the sign, that's what I'm trying to say here. There'd be no effect on the physical or environmental conditions, it's just a sign, and the situation is really not self-created from the standpoint that it's a business, it's a business venture, they have to be able to see this, and it's for the betterment of the tenants and the community in general to have knowledge about what's going on, what's in that particular location. I think, too, that the part of these findings, which may not pertain to any particular category that I just went through, is that this is going to be a major improvement to the town of Arundacote, and I think generally the public will be very pleased with the outcome of this project.
I'll second it.
No, it was seconded by Mr. Antini already.
Oh, he did?
He did. Any discussion?
I just have one point. I'd like to suggest that we modify that to put an elevation limit on the height of the sign. I have no, I mean, I don't care how high the sign is, I just don't want it to be any higher than the Georgetown liquor sign or the Georgetown Plaza sign across the street. Because I think that, you know, the issue's not the height, it's really just the elevation to make sure that it's not going to be staggered, and one's going to be higher, and another one's going to be higher. So I would just suggest that we grant the variance of an additional five feet with the provision that it is no higher in elevation than the sign that's directly across the street.
Well, although we don't know what size that sign is, it's kind of hard to, to put that on it, because we don't have a measurement of that sign across the street. And what happens if it's only 15-foot high?
Well, grant the additional five feet. I mean, they get the 20 feet, but grant the additional five feet with the limitation that with the additional five feet, it will be no higher in elevation than the sign across the street. I mean, when I look at this, this is a great diagram, but we've seen before that just because someone gives us a diagram, doesn't mean that's what the finished product is going to look like. And there are 52 proposed inches on the top of this that are kind of fluff. If they lop those 52 inches off, and we have sign all the way to the top, and that sign is five feet, which is pretty much my height, five feet taller than what's pretty, directly across the street, that will be a lot of sign, comparatively speaking.
They, they can't lop the, the sign that gets put up has to look like that sign. If they lop that off, we would not give them the CFC, and we would give them a code violation of $350 to start.
Could I suggest that instead of conditioning it relative to the sign that we don't know the height of, that we simply indicate that it would be subject to the approval of the building department staff, and if there's something outrageous, they'll bring it back to us?
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me.
Because I, I'm thinking that, that point may do it, and the point is, I think, just aesthetically pleasing as opposed to, I don't really view that as being, it's like the frame for the sign.
Well, it's, it's just that, you know, in places like DC, they do a maximum height as opposed to, like a maximum elevation as opposed to a number of actual feet in height. You can't be any taller, any higher than the top of the Capitol dome. So on this one...
Oh, okay, yeah.
The issue is just that there's a maximum elevation as opposed to the actual linear height. But I think that that's fine.
I don't know what the elevation would be, though. Yeah, that's the problem we have, we don't know what that other sign is.
Because, because Ridge Road is here, and then it goes off the side.
Right.
So 15 feet on Ridge Road is different than 15 feet one foot set back from Ridge Road.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, you know, the one thing I think to Jim's point here, you'd like to avoid getting into a war here of who can have the higher sign, because that could go up and down East Ridge Road before you get done. And it's not likely, but who knows? You never know, and, but we deal with each application as it comes. So if someone made a, you know, had 20 tenants and needed a sign that would be higher, then we may or may not, you know, approve that. It all depends on each individual sign, but I understand your...
The other thing is, the right-of-way of Ridge Road is 66 feet wide, and I would venture to guess that this sign is probably 15 feet back from the right-of-way, and Georgetown is also 15 feet back, that's total of 30 to 66, so you're looking at two signs that are 96 feet apart. Driving down the road at 20, 30 miles an hour, you're not going to be able to tell which sign is higher unless there's a huge difference. And so even, even for us to go out there and measure Georgetown, so we had a benchmark to, to, who would be a lot of trouble for, for very little return, in my opinion. As I, I, I just spoke to the chairman about, I wouldn't condition the mo, the motion on a measurement that we don't have before us, but I do think it is a wise observation to make. So it would appear that the application is really within the parameters of what's there. In any event, in leaving it up to the discretion of staff, subject to a referral back, I think would accomplish everybody's concerns as well as requests. So if that's okay with, with the motion, why don't you incorporate that into the motion and proceed?
All right, so grant, the motion, as I understand it, would be to grant the variance with the condition that the final sign would be approved by the staff or referred back to us for further action. Is that correct? Okay. All right, with that condition, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and Mr. LaPerry is absent. Next item on the agenda then would be the application with respect to 4903 Culver Road. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Thank you. You're welcome, have a good night. No one wishes to make?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the application as proposed. I believe the granting of the variance will not have an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as it is really similar to what is, what's been existing there for years, a lot of smaller type homes, and the current structure is really an eyesore, and I think it would be a very nice addition to the neighborhood. I don't believe there could be any feasible alternative, it's very hard to work with this type of structure by the lake, and also I believe the requested variance is not substantial. The variance, I believe, will not have an adverse impact on the physical, environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and I believe the alleged difficulty is not self-created. The fact is probably created by the lake effects. But anyway, I, I think we should approve it as a point for it.
Any second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right.
I have one condition I'd like to add, is I'd like to make sure that they do check that, that it is not asbestos siding, that they're going to be disturbing, and if it is, that they make sure that a certified expert will be removing it, which is required by law anyway.
So the condition would be that the applicant will comply with any regulations regarding asbestos removal, right?
Right.
And do you want to limit it to just asbestos?
Well, if you could put down any environmental, because who knows if there's anything inside, there could be lead or whatever. It's a very old building.
Asbestos or, would it be environmentally sensitive?
There you go. It's perfect.
Materials, okay.
Now I know why we got you for seven more years.
All right, so the app, the app, the motion is to approve the variance with the condition that the applicant will comply with regulations regarding removal of asbestos or environmentally sensitive materials. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no, no opposed, and no abstentions, and what, Mr. LaPerry continues to be absent. The last item on the agenda is, did everyone receive the draft of the minutes of our December 3, 2012 meeting? All right, then I would make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented for the December 3, 2012 meeting.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no, no opposition, no abstentions, and Mr. LaPerry remains absent. And we are adjourned.